Hello, League of Women Voters. White Bear Lake area welcomes you to this virtual forum for candidates running for Vannis Heights Council. You'll be electing two people for the council. This forum is not open to the public and is not being livestreamed, but it is being recorded and we will post it on our YouTube channel. In addition, local cable stations will replay this forum on a schedule they determine. If for some reason your internet connection gets lost, please call in on your phone and we'll make up time that we lost. I'm Mary Santi. I live outside the district, right next door in White Bear Township. I'll be moderating. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that encourages citizens to participate in their government. While the League studies and takes stands on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidates or any political party. The goal for our forums is for voters to learn about the positions of candidates who are going to be on the ballot November 3rd. So all of the candidates were invited to the forum. And we have here Eric Gabel, Bob Morse, and Steve Rogers. I know that Aaron Reeves, candidate, moved out of the district, so he has withdrawn. And we did not hear from David D. Jarley or Jason Jacobson. So candidates will give your opening statements in alphabetical order. And after that, the questions will rotate for each question. And I'll tell you one, who's first, who's second, who's third. And closing statements will be in reverse order. A timer will show a card when you have 15 seconds and then stop. And you may then finish your sentence. So we can have Eric Gabel. You may begin your opening statement.
Thank you, Mary. So my name is Eric Gabel. I've been your neighbor in Vannis Heights for 10 years now. I live with my wife and my rescue dog Barney. I'm running because I deeply care about the Vannis Heights community. I am endorsed by Jamie Becker-Finn, Northeast Metro Climate Action, and Run For Something. And I'm running on my values. And my values conveniently spell out the acronym LIFT. And those values are leadership, innovation, fairness, and transparency. So I think we need real leadership in this community. And with that, we need innovative leaders. We need leaders that are willing to think outside of the box and not look at what everybody else is doing, but decide to make some low-risk bets on certain things and just try it out, see if it works, because we can get a lot of reward from that. The F in LIFT is fairness. I believe that we need to be fair in everything we do, whether that's social, racial, any issues that come before the council. We need to make sure that we're being fair. And the last bit is transparency. I believe that we need a transparent government so that we can make sure that the government is doing what we want the government to be doing. Because the council does work for the citizens. And so we need to make sure that what we're doing, we're doing in the interest of the public. We're doing it transparently. So hopefully, over the course of tonight, I'll be able to share a little bit more about my values with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comes Bob Morse.
Thank you, Mary. I have been in Vannis Heights for 20 years myself and raised by two kids here, my wife Diane and our little golden retriever Willow. As a matter of fact, they've gone to the White Bear Lake schools. So they're White Bear Bears through and through. I have been working in very, very many nonprofit councils, a lot of campaigns for capital campaigns, like the Lakeshore Players Theater, the White Bear Center for the Arts, past-present for Rotary. So what I'm saying, there's tons of different things that are on there. But what I'm saying is that I have a feel for the heartbeat of the community. And I've always been working on the communities from day one and working with that. Why I got involved in the council in the first place is that what I'd seen, as a banker, I'm a banker in White Bear Lake. And what I've seen is the sports center itself, that was a kind of a debacle. It cost $26 million to build. We ended up selling it for 10. That's not a business model I would recommend anybody follow. And then shortly thereafter, I would say shortly, maybe three years down the road, we purchased the Garso site there for $850,000 or so. And there's $1.2 million of cleanup underneath it. Basically, I didn't think that was a very responsible thing to do with our budget. So what I'm running on is I'm running on stewardship and keeping our taxes low. I'm running on infrastructure in our parks and trails. Infrastructure, talking about the streets and disrepair of some of the park equipment and signage. So that's something that's quite important to me as well. And then also growth and development, not only saving money where we can, and I can talk about that later, but also taking the limited development that we have for commercial and residential and making an impact for housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Rogers.
Thank you, Mary. And congratulations on your 100th anniversary of the right to vote. And thank you for the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. My name is Steve Rogers and I'm a 13-year resident of Vannis Heights. And my reason for running for city council is because democracy doesn't just happen. It is on the backs of just regular citizens like the three people here to do their part. And I determined that this was my time to serve. I don't have any particular government experience. But what I think I do bring is the ability to listen well. I have one mouth and I have two ears and I use them in that perspective. And I think what I want to do is focus on collaboration with the city council because we just want to be successful and move forward. A couple of things that are passion projects for me is certainly around environment. I would like Vannis Heights to be a Green Step City, to be registered as one. And human rights is important, as we have seen from this summer. And there's a good start with the community engagement, but I think we can do a lot more and go a lot deeper in the area of education around racial justice. Thank you.
All right. We will now switch over to questions. And the first to answer, the first one is going to be Bob Morse. And the question is, what strengths do you bring to the council as a leader?
Thank you, Mary. So it's almost like I've been working all my life for this opportunity to be involved in it. I'm arguably the most well-rounded candidate of all, although, I mean, not to disparage my opponents, all the way through those that are here and not here, because they all bring something to the table. However, worked with, like I said, many, many nonprofit organizations. One of those is Northeast Residents, Inc., which is a local nonprofit that works with the developmentally disabled and as far as group homes go. So I worked on there for, gosh, 18 years on their board. My brother was, had autism and he's passed away now. But that was a preparation for me of working towards that and taking care of him. And I learned an awful lot with doing that. But I've learned an awful lot in a lot of different areas too. Past president of Rotary, also for the Workforce Investment Board in Ramsey County. I was the past chair for that and also for the youth council within Ramsey County itself. So we've got a lot of experience in a lot of different areas to be able to bring that forward. About a lot of boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to go is Eric Gabel.
Thank you. So the strength that I bring as a leader is a lot of analytical thinking. I do have a PhD in synthetic organic chemistry, which I got from the U. So I'm a highly analytical person. And I've also served on a lot of boards. I'm currently a board member of the Vannis Heights Area Community Foundation. I was also a board member on the Garso Task Force, where I and another member came up with the idea of enticing a brewery to be located there. And from what I hear, that plan is actually going forward. I'm also the vice president of my homeowners association. So I also have a lot of these experience on different boards as well.
And the next to answer is Steve Rogers.
I have never run for elected office before. So I actually went and did a little look up of it. My sales, I'm a sales professional, and so I've done that all my career. So I'm a little bit of a problem solver. So in researching what makes a good city council person and what makes a good sales professional are kind of the same things. Is that we listen. I've already hit on that a little bit. Is that you have to understand what the issues are. You can't prejudge, you can't make assumptions. Everything I do is try to mitigate risk. I also, you have to collaborate. You have to make them a trusted partner of yours and they're a trusted partner of yours. I think in doing the research, it was the listening, it's being able to collaborate with the other people, not only on the city council, but collaborate with the staff, collaborate with citizens, to be able to work together because we don't need this to be divisive. We don't need to be like the rest of the country. We're all trying to keep everything. Vannis Heights is a great place to live. And finally, respect. You have to respect everybody in the room because you want to be treated the same way. Thank you.
Okay, everyone answered that. Do you have any further to add? Okay, we'll go to the next question. And the first to answer this is going to be Eric Gabel. And that question is, what specific contribution do you want to make to Shoreview?
I don't know about a contribution to Shoreview, but I do have a lot of contributions I want to make to Vannis Heights.
Time.
Sure. I'd really like the city to be more walkable. In the planning that we do, I would like it to be very much city people-centered in planning. You know, more walkable areas, have a city center be kind of more of a hub for people where you can, you know, park your car one place and you actually feel like you're at a location where you want to walk around and actually look at stuff and go into different little shops and stuff. So that's one thing. Steve hit on this. I'm also a big proponent of sustainability. So the Green Step City program that Steve was talking about, that's a free voluntary challenge to promote sustainable practices, reduce costs, and improve the quality of life in the city. That's another thing that I would really like to bring to our cities. So that's, I think that's about how much time I'm going to have, so.
Thank you. Steve Rogers.
The contribution I want to make is to keep Vannis Heights a town that people want to move to. In that regard, they want to feel safe. So in that regard, I want to make sure I reach out to the people who help make us safe. That would be the fire department, police department. Somebody told me that city council is the closest form of government directly to the people. And so I have, you know, aspirations of the Green Step City, like Eric said. And the human rights are important to me. But just the day-to-day function of the city, that people feel safe, that people are able to get where they want to go, that they have amenities, that the roads are plowed, that parks and trails are accessible. I want to keep that, what makes Vannis Heights a great place to live. I want to keep that going. I don't want to do any harm. I don't want to put us in jeopardy. And with the pandemic, I think that is going to be something that the next city council is going to have to be dealing with, is the challenges of budgeting for all the amenities that we want and what makes it great to live here.
Thank you. Bob Morse, unmute yourself.
I did. Thank you. So there's some overlap with the other folks that are there as well. Safety is a big thing. We've noticed some of those different things in different parts of the city as well that have happened and some windows and car break-ins and that kind of thing, to step that up more so on what we're doing. But I'd like to be able to have a good repair in our streets and keep on that plan that we have. When I first got in council, two years ago, we didn't do any streets. There was zero. When I got on it, we did 1.1. And when, this year, we're doing two miles. And the average is 1.2 that we need to do throughout the city in order to keep that up. So that's been quite a boon to work on that. And we still got a lot more to do yet on that. So we're moving forward, accelerating that. At the same time, we're keeping our taxes down. Stewardship is a big part of it. I'm a banker, so that's what we do, right? Take a look at it. We saved, I saved, well, I noticed that the Vannis Heights Commons needed to be refinanced and that we could do it under the bonding rules. Nobody else caught it, was able to save $670,000 for the people of Vannis Heights. And also, along with that, I want to bring solar, solar signs, some solar items in the buildings. I've been looking at that. So I'm a big proponent of that. And also for new trails. We've got some new trails in the works and we're looking at that right now. People are at home, they want to be able to use more of the amenities that are available. Thank you.
Anyone have more to add? Eric Gabel.
Yeah, I would like to add, I'm also for adding new trails. I think that's one of the parts that makes our city great, is we've got some great trails. We've got some great parks. It's always nice to see neighbors out walking around. And I would like us to have a robust trail system so that we can go to different parts of our city without having to get in a car and go drive somewhere.
Any more? Okay, we'll go to the next question. The first to answer is going to be Bob Morse. And that is, the question are asked, where does each candidate stand on the development at Highway 96 and McMenamy?
Well, on the Highway 96, McMenamy, it's a long conversation to be able to do. But I believe what they're talking about is the at-home apartments that are putting in there as well. That's already been decided. It's been looked to rezone under the PUD to be able to put that in there, looking at having an apartment building and some townhomes in the area by at-home apartments. We're going to bring some Class A apartments over to that. But one of the big proponents on that, and I put a lot of work into this thing and studying and what we're doing, probably a good six solid weeks of looking at this thing and putting some things together on it, is that we have a ton of affordable housing within Vannis Heights, a lot. We've also got an aging community, people that want to downsize. Their kids have left, they want to be able to move on to something other than what they have. Well, guess what? This is going to provide that for them. There's going to be townhomes that are, they're rented. I prefer that they be owned, but that's not my decision. But the Erickson family wanted to sell it and they wanted to put at-home in there. It's going to be a lot more reduced traffic in putting it through. It was going to bring more revenue into the city as well at the same time. And it's going to provide that affordable housing, going to free that up for families to move in. I just had a family that's moved in a little bit with mine as well. That'll add more to our schools with the school levy that just went through. So there's a lot more to discuss here, but I see my time's up. So that's how I want to answer it. Thank you.
Steve Rogers.
In this campaign, the question I get asked most often is my thoughts on the at-home apartment complex. And I live equidistant between the Centerville Road and County Road F apartment and this at-home. So I did some research on it and I was watching the minutes, the city council meetings. And the owner was going to do something with this land anyway. And there was different options on the table because it was zone commercial. And I think the city council did a very thorough job in vetting that. I think that traffic is a major concern for the people. But again, you have to balance that out with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which is like the roadmap for Vannis Heights. And it's going to call out for more, we'll need more housing in this city. So I think if you balance that out, I think that I agree that this is a good decision. The houses, you know, I've seen the videos of it or the pictures and it looks beautiful. And I think it will be good for the city and it will bring in tax revenue.
Thank you. And Eric Gabel.
So the at-home apartments is a really complicated issue. You have neighbors who don't want this going in. But then again, you could have had like a factory or warehouse with heavy trucks going in. So I'm sure that we wouldn't want that in that neighborhood as well. It will bring in tax revenue, so that's a good thing. It will take away green space, so it's a bad thing. But it is private property, so we can't really tell them to keep it as a green space. So what I'm saying is, there are goods and bads. I would like to see high-density housing built closer to city center because I think that's where high-density housing belongs. Like I said, I'm a big proponent of walkability. There's really nothing to walk to other than the park over there. You're not really going to walk to shops or anything from that location. So what we're doing is we're creating another apartment building plus townhomes full of auto-dependent people who are going to add traffic to our roads. So I just don't think that's the appropriate location. I understand why the council made the decision that they made. And had I been in their situation, potentially, I would have voted for it as well. I don't actually know that. I haven't researched it that thoroughly. But yeah, like I said, I think that high-density housing really, really should belong in city center where that traffic can get right onto the interstate or right onto the county road.
So we have an opportunity for another 30 seconds for any of you. Did it get enough time?
I'll do that, Mary.
Bob Morse.
I'll do it too. So I, thank you. I do appreciate that part of it though as well. But there's a couple of other things that we did look at. Class A apartments, for instance, at-home apartments themselves are a Class A, rather is what I should say. All the communities that they're located in are five stars. They've all given them five stars all the way through, they're great neighbors on the way. There's a mix of seniors and Gen Xers and millennials that are in there. So it's really interesting on that. But one thing I want to point out too is that the density is not your normal density. When you talk about density, it's almost like a, it's like a four-letter word these days. But it's 13 units per acre as opposed to the normal 26 to 28. So it's something we've never seen before. It's definitely different than astrometals. So I just wanted to be able to point that out.
Any more, any further comments? Okay, we'll go to the next question. The first to answer will be Eric Gabel. Are you in favor of adding more sidewalks in the city? If yes, what is your plan to pay for them?
Yes, I am for adding more sidewalks to the city. I think we generally refer to them as trails around here. Yeah, I believe we need a, we need a robust system of trails. This is how we can get people who are either too young to drive, people who are elderly and maybe can't drive anymore, families who want to go on bikes, people to walk around. This is a way we can make our city more healthy. Paying for that is a tricky issue because we would have to come up with this money. And whether that means raising the levy, which would be something that I would only want to do very slowly, very sparingly. But that's, that's something that I would have to go and really sit down with a budget and look at that.
Thank you. Bob Morse.
Excellent. So of course, I would be in favor of doing that. The things that were, people mentioned most that they would like sidewalks are on county roads, more so than any place else, like Edgerton, for instance. We've got a Kohler Task Force that's looking at trails. I should say trail. It's like Eric had mentioned, sidewalks are often called trails. But on the north side of Kohler, I think they're looking at it. I am not part of the task force. I'm going to say that right now. But it's a mix of community members and be able to make that decision. So we're looking at that and partnering, as Steve had mentioned before, with the county and discussing with them a little bit more about what is dual, what are our options to be able to do it. As far as paying for it goes, the first thing I do, I had, I had just mentioned that we prioritize. So let's get our streets and our parks together on what we're doing and then see about putting that thing through. But there is, there are different ways that we can pay for that as well and figure that out. Thank you very much.
And the next to go is Steve Rogers.
The one thing that's very interesting about Vannis Heights is the lack of sidewalks in around city streets, but they have the sidewalks on the county roads. The great thing about Vannis Heights is that because traffic is relatively low on the city streets, my wife and I certainly can walk on the side of the roads. I would love sidewalks. And in the pandemic, we've seen a lot of people using the roads more. The question is, how, where can you put the sidewalks along the city streets? Because there's yards there, there's people's front yards. And that is going to open up another can of worms. If you could put a sidewalk in, I guess the question is, if there's any roadwork that's being done, can they put in a sidewalk? But again, I don't know to a deep enough level to do that. But yeah, I mean, I think, safe from a safety perspective, you'd want to have more sidewalks. I'm just not sure how you would pay for it. That's something I would need to research more.
Thank you. Any more to add, anyone? Okay, we'll go to the next question. And the first to answer is going to be Steve Rogers.
All right.
In 2019, the city purchased a subscription to Pollco and an online anonymous polling service to solicit resident opinions. How effective do you think this tool has been? And do you have thoughts about other ways to expand opportunities for residents to be informed and provide input?
Well, that's an interesting question. I don't know anything about Pollco. And I don't know what it does. Nobody's ever called me about any kind of a survey. I do know that in looking on the website, that you can see the 2016 survey that they did. And everybody's pretty fired up about living in Vannis Heights. We've got great advocates for that. I think to the point, I think we need to do a better job of communicating city council work with the public. Eric did inform me that we do not have a communications director, although there was one planned in the budget to do that. But because of the pandemic, they didn't. I think this, if there's one thing we can do better is understand city council reasoning for why they do what they do. The McMenamy, or the at-home apartments is a perfect example. Everybody I talked to had different knowledge about what happened and they still were confused as to why the city council decided what they did. So I think that is kind of an imperative because we are stewards for the people. So we need to be able to get a clear, consistent message out to them.
Thank you. Eric Gabel.
So Pollco, I really like the idea of using Pollco. I think we should be using it a lot more. Myself, I am an analytical person, like I mentioned earlier. And I think that we can derive a lot of value from asking different questions of our residents and just getting their opinions. Being anonymous, we can get a true unvarnished opinion from people. I think we need to be publishing more of these polls. And we can even do something as creative as post a question like, if you've lost your wallet, do you think you would get it back? That's been shown in sociological studies to correlate with happiness with your neighborhood. So I think there's a lot of things that we can be doing with this tool and we need to really utilize it to its fullest potential.
Thank you. Bob Morse.
Thank you, Mary. So Pollco, I think Eric had mentioned something about being innovative and some different things. That was one of the innovative things that, that we in a smaller town here, 13-6, to be able to put something together for communication's sake. So we've got our normal communications, you know, you've got the newspaper, you've got the newsletter, and some different things. You've got the cable TV and be able to put something together on that. And we were looking at a communications person and a part-time was in the budget until COVID hit. And that caused the city a big hit of $600,000 to be able to put things through. We did get a lot of that back through the CARES Act, who gave cities different amounts of money all the way through that you could also give to other nonprofits. But beside the point, Pollco is something that we could continue to expand on it. It needs to reach more people from what they have. I think that's really an important portion of what we need to do. And also maybe figure out some other innovative things that we could do as well. There's, I think Eric had mentioned something as well about the wallet and being able to put something like that together. But also being able to get out and talk to people too. They have a little more things just, rather than just all the events. They have a little more things just rather than just all the events, to be able to go out and be forthright about it and talk to people. It's a short questionnaire about some things they like to see. Thank you.
Any more to add? Anyone? Okay, the next question, the first one to go is going to be Bob Morris. And that question is, "What is your position regarding Badness Heights participating in the Green Step Cities program?"
Well, on the Green Steps, Councilmember Yoker is actually the one that's been looking at that more so than I have, meeting with it and giving the council and the staff some information in the workshops in regard to the Green Steps. Green Steps in itself, sounds like it's something that is very interesting. As I'd mentioned, I am pro-solar power to be able to look at some of that. It's also a great way to decrease some different expenses from what you have and to be more responsible for your own power and that of the city as well. But there's more to look at as far as Green Steps. There's more than what meets the eye in that regard. It does sound like there's free, but yeah, I'm a banker. There's no such things as free lunch. Being able to look at some different things and what they have. And there's, it runs a little deeper than just something that's local. It's actually not, not from the United States. It's actually outside of the United States and to be able to put that in. So there's more to look at on that. And I know some other cities have looked at it and have been very adamant about not being part of Green Steps. So there's something there to look at a little more so, and I would have to do more research in that regard as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Steve Rogers.
All for it. We've got fires on the East Coast. We've got hurricane after hurricane down in the South. You can't argue with climate change and everything. We can't do anything about those, but we can do something local. And I know that population comparable cities like Brainerd, Fergus Falls, and I believe it's Marshall, all are Green Step City participants. Again, it's about quality of life. It's about sustainability. It's about what can we do locally to help our environment? And I don't know how even being a Green Step City would be detrimental to any businesses coming here. And I think citizens will take advantage of it and ride the coattails of the city. Thank you.
Eric Gabel.
Yeah, I'm really confused about what Bob was talking about, about it being international. This is administered by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. So I don't really know what the international comment was about. It's also a completely voluntary program. So we can do whatever steps of the Green Step program we want to do, and we don't have to do anything else. The only obligation is you pass a resolution saying, "We're a Green Step City." Everything else is voluntary after that. So I don't see a downside. I see a lot of upside. There's a lot of great guidance on the website. I think everybody should go visit the Green Step website and see what it's all about because I think it's great for a city.
Thank you. Any more to add? Okay, the next, on the next question, Steve Rogers will begin. And that question is, "Badness Heights has continued to place a high importance on comparatively low tax rates, and there is competition for funding in all the city's services. Are there categories of city's services, needs, or wants that you feel need special attention in the next three to four years?"
Okay. When I look at the 2020 city budget, the most expensive components of our budget are the sewer, water, police, and fire, in that order, I believe. And I know that the city is working on upgrading the sewer lines. I mean, I think if that's where all the, we spend most of our money, we certainly have to account for that. I think for me, living on the protected wetlands, we had the wettest summer ever in 2019, and so there was a lot of water being held in the marsh, and that caused all sorts of problems, not just wet yards. So that would be something that's very much of interest to me is because there's a lot of people that live on the wetlands around Badness Heights. I think it seems I would want to talk to Ramsey County Sheriff to talk about how they do what they do and the costs involved and what they provide us, as well as the fire department. Not anything bad about it, but I just want to understand where the money goes, just to study it. And so those are the things that I would focus on for special attention.
And the next is Bob Morris.
Thank you, Mary. If I understand your question, you're asking about what, if there's any special needs that we need to do in four to five years? I believe, is that what, it was a long question. I'm sorry.
It was. Three to four.
Three to four. It's very similar to boiling it down and saying, "Well, how do you set this up for the next people that are going to be in the council? To be able to put things through?" So you set it up for success from what you have. I think our housing needs in being able to do that, opening up some affordability and moving more families in here, that pairs nicely with White Bear Lake Schools with District 624. Not to mention, we've got Mounds View as well, but I primarily talked about White Bear because we've got the levy that is going through, and that's going to add quite a lot to our taxes. We're one of the lowest taxes in the cities in this area from what we have. So I think that catching up to our infrastructure, we ranked all the streets scientifically all the way through, so we know which streets needed to be, needed attention first. We need to catch up. That's going to take another two to three years, probably three years, to catch up to where we already are and to set us up for that. We have 62 manufacturers and other businesses within Badness Heights, and that was going to provide more jobs and more people, and the BRT comes in five years. So there's quite a lot to consider in putting it through, but getting it ready for growth and also developing what's already here. I think that's the biggest part of it.
Thank you. Eric Gabel.
So when you talk about the budget and different departments having to fight over funding, I think that leads to something that I say a lot, and that's we need to plan for the future we want to see, and that includes making a budget. So we can do whatever we'd like to do with the city. We just need to prioritize that and put it in the budget. So I feel like our levy needs to reflect our priorities, and not our priorities reflect our levy. So that's my short answer for that one.
So any others have more to add? Bob Morris?
If I can add something real quick too. You mentioned about some of the sewers and being able to put the budget. That is a separate budget in and of itself. So we don't have to take money from Peter to pay Paul on that. That's planned well in advance. And we are on our way from where we were two years ago and being able to refinance the commons to add another to our revenues as far as $250,000, I think is what we added in the past year and a half that I've been on the council. And also divesting some land that we've got up by the County Road F area that we sold. We bought it for $800,000. We're buying it or we're selling it for $215,000. We do have a little bit more land we can sell, but as I said, some storage ship areas that really need to do so that we can set it up for three or four years down the road. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to the next question. Eric Gabel will begin. And the question is, "Give us an example of when you encountered an unethical situation, and how did you react?"
So I'm going to be honest. I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I envy the other candidates who get a minute to think about this. I will tell you that I feel very strongly about my ethics. And when something unethical is happening, I am the person who stands up and says, "This will not stand. We will stop this. We will do it the right way, and we will correct it." I'm very ethically minded, and so if I see something, waste, fraud, abuse, anything like that, you can guarantee you will hear my voice about it.
Next is Bob Morris.
Very good, Mary. Thanks. So in unethical practices that I've encountered, I also want to say that, you know, I don't complain and things out, but one thing I can say that does happen on the council is you learn some different things and stuff too. If there is something that comes up that even has the appearance of a conflict of interest or being unethical or whatever, you need to withdraw from what you're doing. A good example of that would be where you had the Astro Meadows with the Urban family, and Councilmember Urban was on the council. I can just think of that one example. He withdrew from that because he wasn't going to be getting anything directly out of that, we found out. But at the same time, you know, I wasn't on the council at the time either, but at the same time, it had the appearance of a conflict of interest, and it would be unethical for him to vote. So that's a good, that's a good example that I can think of right now that is a good concrete tangible that everybody can grasp. Thank you.
Steve Rogers.
I don't think I ever run into a situation of unethical behavior. And I would like to think that I certainly would call it out, stand up to it. Of course, you know, if people are watching this, they would think politicians are unethical to begin with. But this is a nonpartisan position, and I think that the people on this call are all morally and ethically straight arrows. I think why I am running is to be a steward of the city. There's nothing to be gained on my part. I just want to make sure that the city is in good hands, and I want to keep it being prosperous and again, a great place to live. But I think we all have to make that decision, and I think we hold each other accountable, especially on the city council. That's why there's five people elected.
Anything? Okay, Eric Gabel?
Yeah, so I did. Not a specific example, but I did want to piggyback on what I was saying. If I get elected, one of the things that I want to do is to ask the council members to pass a code of conduct. I think that we need to be making sure that we have some ethics encoded, including saying if any business before the council can affect us financially or otherwise. And I would like to see all council members fill out disclosures that larger cities require, that we don't just because of our size.
Anyone else? Something to add? Okay, we'll go to the next question. The first to answer is Steve Rogers. And that question is, "How would you keep our community healthy from COVID-19?"
Trust science. I mean, we have, although the message has been confusing, it's pretty simple. Social distance, wear a mask, wash your hands. And I think at least when I'm around town, there's a great majority of people that do that. I know it's very frustrating for everybody. They can't do all the things that they normally would want to do. I certainly can't, and it can be very frustrating. But the other option is not good. Sickness, hospitalizations, who wants that? I understand where people say, you know, you want to be free to do it, but you also are free up to a point that you don't infringe on somebody else's rights. So to keep the community safe, I would just say, follow, follow the science. Follow the health professionals.
Thank you. Eric Gabel.
Yeah, I myself am a scientist, so I'm definitely on team science here. We definitely do need to be doing those things. We need to be wearing masks when we can't maintain social distance. Social distance is number one. Wearing masks is number two. Definitely wash your hands. I'd like to see our community get the reputation of, "We are one of the safest communities to go shopping in" because we follow these recommendations. Yes, we just, we need to follow the science, and we need to do what the scientists tell us we need to do.
Bob Morris.
Got it. Thank you. So COVID-19, I certainly agree with a lot of other people with this said because it's common knowledge. But what I want to point out and bring up to that as well is that it's been difficult to campaign for a lot of people all the way through that are running for any kind of office and stuff. So one of the things, for instance, that I have, you know, I've got little cards and stuff that I pass out to different folks. Well, when I first ran two years ago, I knocked on doors, and that was very time-consuming. I do about 25 an hour from what they have. I can't do that this time. So we're going from porch to porch. I'm dropping these off. I'm wearing gloves to be able to, you know, latex gloves to be able to put that thing through, keeping the social distance and different things that we need to do. Our businesses as well. Now, I know our White Bear Lake Chamber, who, something that, you know, that I'm associated with and have been for a long time with the White Bear Lake Chamber, Area Chamber of Commerce, is that they have CDC kits for our area businesses as well. I think Steve had mentioned about being able to be one of the safest communities, being able to see what they have for shopping, or maybe that was Eric that did that. But it's important that they follow CDC guidelines, and they are. One thing that bothered me was so much is that we had a lot of the big stores that were open, and the smaller stores weren't. And the smaller stores with their family stores would be able to follow the CDC guidelines much better than having somebody where 100 people gather or 200 people gather in one huge space all at one time. So that was really quite interesting, but that's what I would do, look for a balance, just like the governor said. Thank you.
Anything more to add? Okay, next question, we start with Eric Gabel. And the question is, "In what ways will you seek public input from the community on your decisions?"
Great question. Like I said, one of my values is transparency. I will never shy away from anything that I vote upon. I will always seek public input. I plan on having at least monthly office hours, probably virtually starting now, and, you know, go to a coffee shop when we actually can, just to meet with people and, you know, talk about what's going on. I believe that I will always do what I feel is right. And so defending that while it may, may not be universally agreed with, I'll be at peace with it, and I think I'll be able to at least explain my position. So yeah, always looking for public input, always willing to explain votes.
And the next to go is Steve Rogers.
I think it's very important to have people provide their input to me on the decisions I make because I don't know everything about everything. I want to collaborate with as many people as possible to make the most informed, educated, and correct decisions. Not everybody's going to be happy with it, but again, I have to live with that decision based on the information in front of me, based on the case presented to me. So I think that I am, like Eric, am always going to be open. That's part of the job. You have to be responsive to the citizens because that's who you're representing. So be it through social media, phone, or just out and about. Obviously, it would be nice to be able to meet with people on a regular basis in a group setting, but in the short term, Zoom meetings like this. Thanks.
Bob Morris.
Thank you. So certainly, a lot of what has been said, I'll pair that, mention as far as, you know, our email addresses are listed, my cell phone number is listed. Visibility is always something that's open for someone that can work on from what they have. But I'll give you a situation with a story. So I had one resident that wanted to make a change, wanted to add something to their residence, what they had. But they were having some problems with some of the permitting and working with that. Well, once, as far as the council goes, we don't hear about these immediately. That's the staff, that's something the staff works on for what they have, goes to the planning commission, then comes over to us. So we'll find out after that fact. Well, we found out there was a little bit of issues that were on that thing. So what I did was I was proactive in going over there and contacting him, made appointment, walked over there. And he was really surprised to see me walk across the darn street over to what he was working on to try to resolve that issue. over to what he was working on to try to resolve that issue. So a lot of times, it's not just reactive, but proactive at the same time. It's something that we need to do. And also at events, make yourself available at events, whether you're, you want to just go and relax a little bit, because you're working hard, and you have your own full-time job. But at times, when you're a council member, hey, that's what you sign up for. And that's, that's what I'm all about. Thank you.
Anything more to add? Anyone? Okay, well, go on. And this will probably be the last question. Go first to Bob Morris. What do you think Badness Heights should be doing to deal with racial injustice?
Interesting question on what it is, because this is a new path for all of us, right? So being able to put it in there with a lot of different experiences, and I've got friends from a lot of different races that are in there. We're looking at, right now, a community engagement committee. We're putting that together and looking to see it is, because we need to find out what those questions are first. If there's any issues and what those issues are in Badness Heights, we're going to address those. We're getting different people from the city, a different slice, we're able to look at that and to be able to move forward on that. Second thing, I'm in Rotary, as I mentioned before, but we have an equity inclusivity committee. And part of that committee is that we've put together something called livingroomconversations.org, which comes out of Metro State. And it's basically training the trainer. I've signed up for that to be able to have those living room conversations, to learn a little more about what's going on, a little more from different people, with different perspectives than what I have, right? So I think that's quite important to be able to do that. The third thing is that in campaigning and things have, I'm concentrating on the 4th precinct and putting it through. And the 4th precinct actually has a lot of our minority populations within the city that live in the 4th precinct. So I'm having conversations of conversations with different people about conversations. So in putting some different things together on that, I think it's a well-rounded approach, being able to, we're all in this together, and we're out to lift each other up. We're certainly not out to knock the other person down. I think that's really important to be able to. It's a hard issue, more than anything else, isn't it? So that's, I appreciate the time on that and being able to answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Steve Rogers.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
It is, what do you think Badness Heights should be doing to deal with racial inequities and racial injustice?
All right. Big question. You know, we're starting it with the community engagement, but I don't think it's enough. You really need a human rights commission like they have in Shoreview, because it's not one-on-one. It's not about brown or black people. It's about white people who live in a society that is created for them. The systemic racism is, affects brown and black people, but not us. The society is built for white people. And until you educate it and you call it what it is, you're never going to change it. And so a human rights commission is, is all about the education, not thought police, but an education on what systemic racism is. If you talk to 10 people, white people on the street, they would say, I'm not racist, and they probably aren't. But they're part of a system that is created that is self-continuating because of white people. And we need to educate ourselves about what that is before we can really start. We got to face up to it ourselves before we can do anything about it. So I think we're starting with the community engagement, but I think it needs to go to another level about the systemic racism.
Thank you. Eric Gabel.
Yeah, great question. I, like Steve, also think that we need a human rights commission in Badness Heights. We do have the Community Engagement Commission, which is kind of, I feel like it was a hand-wavy way of passing it without actually passing it. This was a commission that was going to be passed anyway. All of these issues came to the forefront, and then suddenly, we've got the Community Engagement Committee. I feel like we can just go straight to the Human Rights Commission. It costs us very little. It's such an important issue. We need to start addressing it as soon as we possibly can.
Anything more on that question? Bob Morris?
Yep. Oh, well, I would say to my colleagues in putting that thing together that, again, you know, to say that you know it all and what's going on, that we need a human rights commission, that we need more regulation to be able to put something together on that, I don't agree with that. Putting the cart before the horse. Let's do this one step first and see what we have in Badness Heights. We're not the same as Minneapolis. We're not the same as St. Paul. We're not the same as Woodbury. We're not the same as Arden Hills. We're not the same of whatever city you want to put in there. We're not the same. We're different. We're Badness Heights. Being able to put some of those things together, what are the issues? Are there issues? What do we have? Let's, let's explore that. Let's put some time. And why are you in such a hurry in putting some of those things together on human rights? So to say that, you know, that there's racism all the way through, is there racism? Sure. But is there systemic racism? Let's just explore that a little bit more, because then what you're saying is that every police officer that walks the streets, every fireman that walks the streets, they're in a system that is becoming racist. So why don't we just define that? And from what we have, I think this nation's got a lot to offer. It has a ton of things to offer. People continue to come here. Why? Because they have a life that they can build in the United States of America, and I'm going to stand by it. I'm going to stand by the flag in putting some things together. And I think that we can take this one step first, explore it, and kind of work, work through it. It's a emotionally charged system that we need to look at. But let's look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Rogers, and we'll go to Eric, too.
Sometimes a situation or a topic comes up that you just cannot not face, and the time is now. I don't know how many more examples you need to see about systemic racism. And I'm certainly not saying that every police officer is racist. They're not. Most people aren't racist. But it is so apparent. And you can see it in Atlanta, in Louisville. You can see it in Minneapolis. And although we're not Shoreview, why can't we do something? Why can't we lead? Why can't we be innovative? Why can't we just go a little bit deeper? Why can't we have a more serious conversation about this? I'm not afraid of talking about it. We need to talk about it. Thanks.
And Eric Gabel.
So I don't think that the formation of a human rights commission necessarily means that we're saying all these people are racist. There's, there is no presumption that our police officers and our firefighters are racist. That's, that's a ridiculous thing. And why are you against going fast on human rights? I'll just leave you with that.
And so that is all the time we have for questions. We'll begin now with closing statements, and they will be in reverse alphabetical order. So the first to go here is Steve Rogers.
This conversation has made me even more excited about my decision to run for city council. I think that I can bring fresh ideas, innovative ideas, fresh perspective. But primarily, the three things that I want to do is listen, come with an open mind, don't make prejudgments. I want to be able to hear all sides to make the best, most informed decisions. I want to be able to collaborate with not only the other city council members, but the city staff and the citizens, and respect everybody. Because again, the last thing we need is a divisive city council, whoever gets voted in, because we, everybody on this call wants the same thing. We want a prosperous Badness Heights. We want a safe Badness Heights. We want to keep a lot of the amenities we have, and we want to be able to bring in people to want to live here and work here, because Badness Heights is a great place to be. Thank you very much. Steve Rogers.
Thank you. Next is Bob Morris.
Thank you, Mary. As I said, I want to continue with what I've got and working on it. We've worked out pretty hard in putting some things together. But keep in mind that, you know, what I said before previously in getting involved in city council, and why I got involved on some different things with the sports center and putting some things together on that, and how we lost money on it, the Garsole site itself, that unfortunately, we did purchase that. I would not have voted for that for what it has, but that put us in a junk bond status. So I just said it's about time that a banker gets on here to be able to put some things together on it. Well, we've refinanced the Badness Heights Commons, $670,000 for the residents of Badness Heights. We've added some development, and not only just commercial, but also in residential. Some things like S.W.'s Furniture has moved in commercially. The Cadillac will be moving in from what we have. And there's a lot of residential things, too, that we talked about for at-home apartments and such that moved in. So I want to continue that. I want to continue that, moving us out of that junk bond status to be able to look forward to some innovation, the things that we're doing and repair our streets from what we have. There's a lot of things that the city has to offer, and a lot of things that other cities do not have that we have, like the regional parks. So I think it's something that I would like to continue to do that and to bring just a big family unit back over to Badness Heights. Thank you.
And closing out, Eric Gabel.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I feel like this is a very important thing for our community to be able to actually hear from the candidates, especially in this COVID time. So my issue, my big issues are infrastructure and budgeting. We need to budget for the future we want to see. Public safety, safe roads, safe paths, healthy people, less crime, walkability, sustainability. And I really just do want to bring my values to City Hall. And just a reminder, my values, they're spelled LIFT, leadership, innovation, fairness, and transparency. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. I have just a couple announcements before we quit. We will put all of our forums on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters White Bear Lake Area. And you'll find links also to the YouTube recordings on our website, You can request an absentee ballot now on the Secretary of State's website, menvotes.org. If you need to register to vote or update your registration, you can also do that online or when you go to vote. That ends our forum. Thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters about the issues and for coming forward to run in the city of Badness Heights. Thanks to our volunteers and to our viewers for watching and for your interest in becoming informed voters. We ask you to make your voice heard in the general election by voting November 3rd.